Move to approve.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 3.3. In the past month, we've lost three members and former members of our education family. Wanda Bonang is a retired special education instructional assistant at Wycomico Middle. Phyllis Bratton was retired instructional assistant at North Salisbury. And Rebecca Parrott, retired elementary principal at North Salisbury. So, in your own way, please take a moment of silence to recognize their passing. Thank you. 3.4. Public comments? Okay, we have one, Mr. Justin Garner, talking about after-school programs. Mr. Garner?
Hi. So, my name is Justin. I represent Mitchell's Martial Arts. I believe everybody in this room is probably very familiar with Mitchell's. We've been in the community over 23 years now. I also am sure everyone in this room is very familiar with the situation that occurred three years ago. Actually, this October will be three years. So, I'd like to just read something and simply ask for your forgiveness, ask for your possibly partnership back. So, let me just start here. There was an incident that occurred in 2016 that involved two employees of Mitchell's Martial Arts. However, both law enforcement and the judge did not find the owners nor the business itself at fault. Mitchell's Martial Arts and Fitness Incorporated was simply another victim of these individuals. Both were convicted and justice is being served. Unfortunately, in the process, the reputation that Mitchell's has built over the last 20-plus years has been deeply hurt. To give you an idea of the measures the owners took since the situation took place, here's a brief list. The two employees were terminated immediately. The owners cooperated with law enforcement fully and provided any and all records to help the investigation. Once the evidence was brought forth, the verdict was read, the ranks of the two employees were stripped from their international martial arts organization they belong to. It's basically the equivalent of a military dishonorable discharge. They were no longer employable at Mitchell's for this is a lifelong status. Once they served their time, they are still not permitted to enter the facility. This is also a lifelong status. The owners upgraded all security systems to know who's in the building at all times via text message and alerts. They upgraded the clock in and out system for the same reasons. They changed management. Along with my wife, we are poised right now to begin a transition of ownership. So, my wife and I will be transitioning, the Mitchell's are retiring. So, we're in that process right now is one reason why I'm here instead of the Mitchell's. So, they've changed and upgraded all locks on the property and added additional security cameras. Now, while all these measures were not necessary to the situation, the owners felt the need to go above and beyond to make the improvements. So, over the last 22 years, Mitchell's has been a silent partner in the community. You've been with the board a long time. You know our relationship that we had with all the public and private schools in the county. We also run a licensed childcare facility within our own school. We actually run three classrooms, a two-year-old classroom, three-year-old classroom, four, five-year-old classroom. We are, we, at that time of the incident, we were moving forward to become a Maryland excels rated academy, and we've now achieved a level-five status through the Office of Childcare and Maryland Accreditation. We truly believe that martial arts has the power to change hearts, minds, and lives. That's why we're so passionate about what we do and what, why we share it in the manner that we do. I actually met my wife in a martial art class. She beat me up and took me to the ground, and I was quite impressed. And if you've ever seen my wife, she's half my size. So, that got my attention. Mr. Mitchell met his wife, Mrs. Mitchell, in a self-defense seminar. I don't know, that was over 30 years ago. So, martial arts is in all of our bloods, and we truly feel it can change lives. Over the years, we've donated tens and thousands of dollars to underprivileged children in the way of scholarships, as well as partners in the communities such as the Red Cross, Life Crisis, Operation We Care, the Humane Society, Families in Transition, just to name a few. And if you've been involved in the individual public schools, we've done a lot of fundraisers with our skating and different things for the individual schools. Unfortunately, when the situation occurred, not only was the community hurt, we were hurt, and we were removed from all the schools. We were told you cannot enter the schools, you cannot advertise in the schools, you cannot participate in school events. We were literally shunned from basically the entire community. The Mitchell's survived, barely, but survived. And between my wife and I coming onboard and essentially taking things back over, we'd like to ask for your forgiveness. We'd like to ask for your permission to try to rekindle that relationship. Some of the things that we would like to reestablish would be starting a kickbullying out-of-school program where we can partner with you and possibly do some fundraising. When we say fundraising, we do the fundraising to give school supplies, maybe to underprivileged children or what have you in the actual, in the classrooms. So, maybe if we picked a few number of classrooms and sponsored, maybe we could help donate supplies to those particular classrooms. We'd like to offer full one-year scholarships for 10 to 12 children, maybe the board selects, maybe someone in the school system selects. The children would not know that they got it for free. Our staff would not know that they got it for free. That would be between the board and the parents, and it could be however criteria you deem suitable. We would like to reward principals' list honors with free six-week mini-programmes that included uniforms at no cost. We'd like to reestablish our skate night fundraisers for the individual schools. We would like to become guest P teachers during the school year. Couple of private schools that we were guest P teachers at asked us if we could come back every week. We said unfortunately, we can't, we can't do that every week. But the teachers thoroughly enjoyed it, the kids thoroughly enjoyed it, and it was just overall great to see the kids stepping up and straightening up. And possibly, we'd like to participate in the mentoring program to some degree, whatever we can do there to help. Ultimately, we just want to reestablish our relationship with you guys and try to build that back because my wife and I were a little younger than the Mitchell's, so we feel like we've got another 20, 30 years, 40 years of this to go. So, with that said, I'll close my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. We appreciate your comments. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I have our official statement. If I could leave this maybe for you guys all? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Before we go to 3.5, just make the point that I'm chairing this meeting because Mr. Fitzgerald's voice was failing him slightly. He's still telling me what to do over here, so I've got Don on one side, Don on the other. I think I'll get through it, but just so you'll know, we appreciate him being here as well. So, with 3.5, we have a tribute and a...
So, we are very excited and honored to have with us today Mr. Hugh Livingston and his wife Sally, who supports him completely. Hugh, I'm going to read our proclamation to you, a proclamation that's been signed by all of our board members, but generally, we just want to say how much we truly value the years of service that you've provided to our school system. I remember when. We won't go into that, but we really appreciate you being with us, and so, we'd like to read this tribute. So, it's a tribute to Hugh C. Livingston Jr., whereas Hugh C. Livingston Jr. has served the Wycomico County Board of Education and Wycomico County with loyalty and integrity as a member of the School Building Commission from November 1998 through his retirement effective August 1st, 2019. And whereas Mr. Livingston provided outstanding leadership in serving as chairman of the School Building Commission from November 2011 to July 2019. And whereas his unselfish giving of his time, his talents, and his expertise has made a difference in helping to improve and expand the school construction and renovation program for school facilities throughout Wycomico County so that the taxpayers of Wycomico County can be assured their money is being used wisely on functional and sustainable buildings that meet the needs of today yet provide flexibility for the future. And whereas his commitment and dedication to the long-range plans for renovating and building new school facilities to improve the quality of education in all Wycomico County school facilities, including Beaver Run Elementary, Chipman Elementary, Delmar Elementary, East Salisbury Elementary, Fruitland Primary, Fruitland Intermediate, Glen Avenue Elementary, North Salisbury Elementary, Northwestern Elementary, Pemberton Elementary, Pinehurst Elementary, Prince Street Elementary, pretty much all the schools. West Side Intermediate, West Side Primary, West Salisbury Elementary, Willards Elementary, Wycomico Learning Center, Bennett Middle, Pittsville Elementary and Middle, Salisbury Middle, Wycomico Middle, the James M. Bennett Auditorium, James M. Bennett High, Mardella Middle and High, Parkside High, Wycomico High Choices, Wycomico County Stadium, and the Central Office of Wycomico County Public Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Wycomico County Board of Education express their appreciation to Mr. Livingston for his role in supporting public school construction and working to help improve school facilities and supporting the collaboration of the Wycomico County Board of Education, Wycomico County Council, Wycomico County Executive, and the community working together on the School Building Commission to evaluate the plans and recommend the provision of resources to support the school system's capital improvement program as needed. And be it further resolved that the members of the Wycomico County Board of Education publicly acknowledge and thank Mr. Livingston for his many years of dedicated service to the board and to Wycomico County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this tribute to Mr. Hugh C. Livingston Jr. be spread upon the minutes of the Wycomico County Board of Education meeting this 13th day of August, 2019. Would you join us up here, Mr. Livingston, please?
Dr. Hanlon, we'd just like to acknowledge that this is sounding, this is upon a time of a proud teacher in Wycomico County.
All right, let's have you all stand right here. Looking this way. One more.
For these sits down. I had the opportunity to serve with them on the School Building Commission for 10 years, and it's been an honor. You know what? His daughter played field hockey from Kim, and I knew him, but I didn't know how much expertise he had in this community and what he's given our students over this period of time. You can't, you can't write a check for that. And believe me, they didn't list everything he does on this tribute. But Hugh, it's been a... It's been a honor working with you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everything you've done for the students of Wycomico County.
Thank you. Gee, he sat next to me a lot, too. Did he tell you what you do?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, 3.6. Superintendent's report. Dr. Hanlon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malone. I guess the biggest thing that's on all of our minds is that we are just right around the corner from the opening of school once again. We all comment as adults, at least I know, about, you know, how much more quickly summer goes when we're adults than what we remember as children. But in any case, we are approaching those days. We have a big kickoff celebration planned for the 29th of August at the Civic Center where we are very fortunate with the community's support to be bringing Mr. Ron Clark here to speak to our entire school system. So, we're very, very excited about that and very appreciative of the generous support of the Wycomico County Education Foundation in making that happen. So, that's on the 29th, and then our schools will open to students on the 3rd and 4th of September. And so, we're ready to go. We've been very, very busy over the course of the summer with many things happening. We will be providing a report to the board on all of our summer instructional programs next month. This month, we're going to focus on what's been happening behind the scenes and tell you just a little bit about what's been happening in operations. So, Mr. Stauffer, I want to introduce your staff who are going to provide some brief comments on summer work.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon, and good afternoon to our board members. The Division of Business and Operations, like instruction and student family services, has been really busy, a lot of it behind the scenes, but a lot of it, I think, is going to be noticed by our community, our teachers, and our students coming into the school this year as well. Our Human Resources Department, under the direction of Mr. Pavix, currently very busy in the process of hiring over 100 new teachers, doing a great job with that, along with the many other things they have to do to get our school year going. Also, our Finance Department, under the direction of Mr. Jesse Reed, has received the Award of Excellence from Government Finance Officers Association for the seventh year in a row, so we're extremely proud of that. Congratulations to Jesse and his team. And in addition to that, we've been working very diligently, getting our budget calendar together, and also in preparation for the upcoming school year, as well as our audit and legislative audit that'll be happening this fall as well. Also, our Planning and Construction Department, our Department of Facilities, Maintenance, Operations, and Energy, and also our Food Services Department have been extremely busy in our schools and in the community doing some exciting things. So, I've asked the directors of those departments, Mrs. Liesel Ashby of Planning and Construction, Mr. Bob Souza of Facilities, Maintenance, Operation, and Energy, and Mr. Eric Gosley of Food Services to kind of come with us this afternoon and give us an update on all the exciting things that have been going on this summer. So, thank you all very much.
So, I'll kick it off with the start of the alphabet with A. So, we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Just very briefly, there are two roofing projects that are underway currently this summer, one at Glen Avenue, those are the two pictures on the left, and another one at Pinehurst. We did have some challenges with some temperatures, as well as a couple of rain events. However, the contractors have been able to pretty much stay on schedule, so we look forward those being completed before the students return. Next up, there's a series of secure vestibule. I was told to keep this brief and focused on kind of what we had reviewed in SBC, so this is just a selection of them. This is Pemberton Elementary, so there's now a new interset of doors. You still go in and check in at this window, however, this has now become a secure vestibule, so this is the opposite side of these doors here. Mardella, this is the final phase of Mardella Track, which was the coating, bleachers, as well as field events. Here's some additional pictures of that. We also tackled two auditorium projects this year. This is Parkside Auditorium, major seating replacement project, as well as new carpet, new electrical for base lighting along the seating as well. We also upgraded at Wycomico High School. These pictures don't really do Y High justice. The lighting, you know, on purpose is lower in that for performance venue. However, if you've ever attended an event there, the squeak of the floor, yeah, that's gone, so that's a good thing. Any questions related to planning and construction, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise I'm going to pass it along to Bob.
Okay. We're having an extremely busy summer as always, and thankfully, everybody, knock on wood, nothing really catastrophic this year. And I want to keep it that way. One of the big things we're pushing with the introduction of Chad Mackley in our Facilities Department, he's outrageously aggressive, and we're really going into the schools and bringing them up to a different standard. This is Y High. You can see a before and after. The wax that was built up on all of our terrazzo floors wasn't in milth thickness, it was in fractions of an inch. It was that thick, it would chip off. We took out, I think, probably about 1,500 pounds of wax off of these floors. Terrazzo floors should not be waxed, they should just be sealed and buffed. With the introduction of all the new equipment we bought this year, we can now take care of six, depending on the size, whether it's an F-150 or an F-350, it does either 40,000 square feet or 60,000 square feet an hour, as opposed to by hand only doing 3,000 square feet. So, every hallway will be able to be cleaned once a day, which is big for classrooms. You can see here, the before and after, the difference in the wax. Where is it? I can't see it. Here, you want to do it? I can't see. I'm sorry, I'm blind in one eye.
Other duties as a sign.
I'm blind in one eye. Another thing we did is, I think some of you have heard my bucket routine. We try to, if we have something wrong in one school we want to do, then it's a good chance we have to do it in others. We take it countywide, throw it in a bucket, price it out, and figure out a way to implement it over a five-year or less plan. Y High and Mardella were the first two that we did last year. I don't think, according to, what's his name, Butch Waller, I don't think that floor's been done in 20, 30 years. This year, we're doing, Pittsville's done, and believe it or not, we're doing Y Middle. I don't think that one's been done probably since 1931. And you can go to the next slide. There's another photo coming up of Y Middle. Part of the projects with Liesel and I being two parts of the same department, we work together, her funding sometimes is limited with a limited renovation, so we've regrouped, and I take my flooring money and do spots that she can't cover in her project. This, I think, is the guidance counselor's room or area over at Parkside. And we've done this here, we've done it at, we're doing it at Delmar. We've done a lot of it throughout the facilities. Next slide. This year, we opted not to do as much on parking lot work. Most of our parking lots are in pretty good shape. I mean, they still need work, but these are our interscholastic tennis courts. Mr. Malone, you can appreciate it. I know you're a tennis nut. The one on the left, I mean, that's disgraceful. I mean, having other high schools come in from around the state and play. So, this year, we took the approach, we're doing all three high schools. Mardella's in decent shape, so I think there's a total of 11 or 12 courts between Parkside, Bennett, and Y High. Y High's just about done. I think they were doing, they were supposed to do striping today. But, I mean, they look unbelievable. It's just fantastic. Next slide. Oh, this is Y Middle. It was all peeling paint, but it cost us a small boatload of money to have it all scraped, cleaned, primed, painted, and cleaned up. We had it all painted prior to doing the floor. Next slide. That's what it looks like now. One of the other things we've decided to do is, on the top above the doors, right where you have the separation of yellow and white, we're putting an eight-inch, one concrete block, black band around the whole thing. Redoing all the floors, putting all new backboards in golds. Not just that gym, but we have the one in the back, the little small gym. We're also doing pads like you have at Parkside and Y High, and we're doing that next year, I believe it's Parkside. Also, we don't have photos up here because I didn't have a chance, but Mrs. Stowski, we've got the track done at Y Middle. I think it just has to be striped.
Tennis courts?
No, we did the track, too.
Oh, yeah, track, too.
We did the track, too. And the tennis court. I don't think they had an opportunity to work today. We've also worked with the town of Pittsville, and we expanded the back entrance to the school to get the cars off the road. And had a wonderful meeting last week with Mr. Middleton, because he owns the property next to it. Other than that, we probably have another 50, 60 things going on, but it's been a successful year so far. Thank you. Any questions?
Can I say something? Because we've been talking about these tennis courts now since about December, and I want to thank you because I know the public now will see a delightful picture when they make the turn off of East Main Street to go towards the Route 50. And I went by there yesterday, and thank you so very, very much for all that you do.
Actually, that's one of my staff members, Bill Frisch. He pulled me out there, actually coincidentally, before you even brought it up, the week before or a couple of days before, and he said, "This is deplorable. We've got to do something with this." And then, he was able to finagle the budget to have the funds to do it at the end of the year. And we're doing Northwestern, too.
When you told me, you said, "Oh, we got money." I said, "Good." So glad. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Malone, Mr. Fitzgerald. This summer for food service, people always ask me, "How's your summer?" I said, "Well, we had er, we didn't have some, we had er," because we were so busy working. Next slide, please. So, a summer food service program, basically, as you know, we're in the community and schools feeding kids throughout the summer. Some of our sites want us to serve them up until the day that they go to school, but we can't, unfortunately, but we do offer free meals to all children 18 and under. Next one. Some of our statistics, so far this summer, we've served, where is that? Okay. Our site numbers, we have 25 sites this summer. Last year, we had 23 sites. We're in 10 schools and 15 sites out of schools. Next slide is our, and these are some of our sites that we're serving at, or we served at. That's Y High's cafeteria. Pretty floor there. And this is some information on the sites that we serve that aren't in schools, locations, times, and all that information is available and is updated daily, so people that are looking for summer meals can go onto a website and find any place. Basically, in the United States, all they do is put in a zip code, and then it'll direct them to where their... them to where their meals are being served. And that's not only, that's for anybody that participates in the summer food service program. Next slide. Yes, sir.
I noticed there's only one location there for dinner, supper. How many students do we serve?
I think it's in one of the next slides, but this year was the first year we expanded, because we always did breakfast and lunch. This was the first year we expanded our supper meal, we expanded to a supper meal. And we went to Salisbury, not Salisbury, Lake Street Playground, and there was a football program there, and we served kids in that neighborhood. And at that site, we were serving about, it started about 75 kids, by the time it ended, we were serving about 30 kids a night.
So, between 30 and 75?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
This is our meals, some of our data of meals that we served, looking at this year versus last year. Last year's data is for the entire summer, this year's data is just up through July 31st. So, our August information isn't up there yet. Oh, my gosh, that's small, I can't see that up.
Don't ask me.
Do you want me to read it? Can we make it bigger?
I'm blind.
Well, it talks about our new sites this year. The bottom picture was a group of kids that last year we served at the community garden on Camden Avenue, and the kids were so appreciative of the meals that they wrote a big thank-you card for all the food service workers that came to serve them. And the top picture is one of the parents and their child that she brought to the playground, I mean, to the garden every day for lunch. I don't know. We were able to do some, get some publicity out of our summer food service program this summer. We had a reporter from the Daily Times, our dumb arvo now come and do a story on what we were doing, and, do they have copies of this? If you click on the link, you can view the whole presentation from the Daily Times. But that, and that was centered around one of our new sites this summer, where we serve lunch at the city park right across from Ben's Red Swings. Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, sir, Ms. Palmer.
How do you get the vegetables from the fields onto the places where you go? Do you have certain farmers who participate in this, or do you have contracts, I mean, how does that work?
Well, we have a, it's tied in with our school, our normal school program. We bid out, we have a bid with a produce company that we get all our produce from. Now, what we, we didn't do any local this summer, but we were, we will be having some more significant influences of local produce companies that will be providing food to our schools during homegrown lunch week. And that's the last week of September to the first week of August, where we've partnered with specific farmers in Wycomico County or in the surrounding counties where they will, we will bring in things like green beans, what else would be squash, we've done that in the past, we've done strawberries in the past, we've done watermelons in the past, where we sort of find vendors that will, farmers that will, usually they'll bring it to one school, and then we'll put it on all of our trucks and divvy it out to all the other schools in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, I happened to go to the Lake Street section three times, I went for breakfast once and dinner, and the kids, they're really happy, and they're really waiting for you guys to come, and it was really, really well thought of by the community.
We were, one of the, another new site we started this year was at Pemberton School, Pemberton Apartments, and we had, we had a relationship with them in quite a few years. And the kids were so excited about the food, they would be there waiting for the food service worker to come and help her bring the food in the building so they could eat.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon, for including in the board docs last week the information that I asked for. Thank you for supplying it.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
As we said, behind the scenes, it's great, and thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Absolutely. So, you can see the area of business and operations are very busy during the summer. We're excited to partner with Instruction and Student Family Services in preparation for this coming school year. So, a lot of exciting things going on. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
And we're gonna end with Dr. Briggs with, I guess, a brief update on grants.
Sure. Real quick, month of July was another positive one. We received seven grants for totaling just under $600,000. Most of the funding was from MSDE for the Judith P. Hoyer Grant. You guys, most of you guys know about Judy Center. Judy Centers help ensure that all students enter school ready to learn, and that families are equipped with the information and resources needed to support student growth. It's very important, and we have two Judy Centers in Wycomico County Public Schools, one at Pemberton and one at Beaver Run, so, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That concludes my report.
Perfect, thank you. 4.1, approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting on July 9th. Hopefully, you had time to read them word for word and committed them to memory. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor approving the July 9th regular meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, 5.1 Personnel Matters. Oh, that's under consent items, I'm sorry. So, we're under consent items 5.1 through 5.7, and then I understand Mr. Palmer has a question on 5.6.
Yeah, Gene, that's on the...
The Staples contract?
Yeah, Staples contract, and my question was, this is an extended contract, how many times can we extend a contract without having it rebid?
Well, it depends on the terms when we initially go into it, and often we'll bid it so that it has an option to keep using it. So, I don't recall this specific one, but it depends how we bid it, and if we bid it with an option to continue to use it for, in our, for one, two, three, or four years, we can do that. But I say, I can't recall this specific bid.
The other two questions I had was just some clarification on some, maybe some definitions, and that was, what is a non-exclusive contract? What does that mean in relationship to the Staples contract?
Well, I think, I think what it means regarding this contract, and I haven't read it, I have to say that, is that they do not get necessarily all of our business. We can use them if we want to, but that's not the, they don't have the exclusive right to everything that we buy. We can give them, or we can go someplace else if it's a better price.
And I know much of the items that are in the contract are items that we price out in advance, and then it gives the opportunities for the schools to be able to order from Staples at that price for the things that they need during the school year throughout.
And what is a punch-out vendor?
Good afternoon. A punch-out is where we have, with these contracts set up with designated vendors, a prescribed list of products and prices that we have agreed to with that contract. When we are ready to place an order with, for example, Staples, say we want to order Post-it notes, we can, from our website, our web browser, leave our site, go to a designated Staples website that is part of our agreement with them, we place the order for Post-it notes, it creates that order for us, and comes back into our order entry system where we would create the billing process with Staples for that transaction. So, it's a matter of us going to a predetermined site, predetermined products, predetermined pricing, we place the order, and the billing process follows behind that. It's an industry term, punch-out is an industry term that's used, generally used for this process, and we have it set up with at least five or six vendors, one being Grainger, Staples, and others.
And totally unrelated to construction, punch-out.
Like a punch-out list.
Punch-out, a punch list. That's what I'm normally used to.
You're used to a punch list, were you?
It's a metaphorical term for punching out of our environment to the vendors, retail websites that are designed for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gene, that's all I have for questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent items 5.1 through 5.7?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, 6.1. "Upon the recommendation of the superintendent and in accordance with the board's professional services selection for architects, engineers, and construction manager policy, is there a motion to approve the selection of the geotechnical building envelope and commissioning pre-qualified firms as outlined on the attached memorandum?" Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Gene, second.
Okay.
I'm not feeling the love.
Is there any questions?
Everybody wait. Good afternoon. Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Malone, Mr. Fitzgerald, and board members. For those of you that have been on the board for a longer amount of time, you'll realize we have 11 disciplines that we usually pre-qualify for, for $5 million and under. Where the renewal wound up occurring, which is now August, our absolute busiest time of the year, was becoming rather cumbersome. So, we've broken it up into three separate chunks for the ease of our review, as well as keeping things staggered in case we have an issue with a particular vendor. So, this represents three of the 11 pre-qualified vendors that we are looking at. So, you have geotechnical, excuse me, building envelope and commissioning. As you can see, we've outlined, we had five firms submit for building envelope, we're pre-qualifying two. Geotechnical, we had two firms submitted, they're both qualified, they'll be proceeding through, and we had several submissions for commissioning, and this is building mechanical electrical plumbing commissioning services. We had nine firms submitted, and we're bringing forward five, one which is new to us. Any questions?
Does having this pre-approved construction personnel, does it really speed up your timetable for getting bids back?
Yes, sir, it does. And to your earlier question, are board policy related to this? It's a one-year approval up to two-year, up to two one-year renewals, so in theory, they could be pre-qualified up to three years per board policy, but we evaluate each one on an annual cycle.
You have any problem in any particular field right now getting them in? What's the hardest to get?
Hardest to get? Those are yet to come. Commissioning, you can tell, it's, everybody's hungry for work right now, we got a lot of submissions, and we're not gonna have that much commissioning work. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is always a big, big challenge. It's not necessarily getting them pre-qualified, it's getting enough people to the table. As you're aware, there's a huge electrical engineering shortage, not only on the shore, but statewide, so that's always a challenge.
Any other questions for Liesel? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the selection of the geotechnical building envelope and commissioning pre-qualified firms as outlined. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
6.2 Personnel Matters, classifieds for information purposes, so 7.1 Board Members Reports. Let's start with Ms. Ann at the far end to my left.
I thought July was going to be a slow month, but it really wasn't. I went to put up, I did about 11 different activities, but I just want to call out a few of them, especially the project from Dr. Kathy Vale at Glen Avenue School, the summer reading program that she had at the homes on Johnson Pond. I went by there this morning before I came to the board meeting, and they reached a total of 46 children during the summer, and they sent home with these children 150 books. But I think one important aspect of this program is that she and other members of the staff of Glen Avenue worked with the daycare mothers, and what they were doing with the daycare mothers was teaching them and working with them so that they would be aware of reading strategies that they could use with the children when they were reading with them, so that they could pull questions and know what type of questions to ask the children. I thought that was extremely important. I also went over to Prince Street School with their principal, Mr. Jason Miller, and there were three programs that we looked at. One was the store program, one was the reading intervention program, and one was the pre-K readiness program, and saw a lot of happy children over there. I guess the highlight of my July, I was asked by Dr. Creston Long of the NAB Center if I would like to be interviewed as part of the Maryland Humanities Teacher Program, and I was interviewed by a lady who teaches in Baltimore City, and the interview was about two hours, about my teaching career, and also, I also used in there my experience here on the board, and I did include that in the interview. So, if anyone has an extra two hours, I have, I have a copy of it, I'd be glad to loan to you. Also, this past weekend, the Ward Museum of Wildfowl Art held their ninth annual Art in Nature contest. I gave tours for about 10 hours over there during the weekend, but we also have a youth division, and four students from Wycomico County did place first and second and honorable mention in the youth division of the photo contest. So, I had a very interesting July, and I'm really looking forward to all the activities that are going to start at the beginning of school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Okay. I, along with some other board members, got an invitation to Salisbury Middle School for their campus fire program, where the kids worked through a leadership program in the theme of The Lion's King, and they each had exhibits that they had prepared during that three-week period of time, and they had, each one had an individual student who would walk with each one of the board members and walk them through and explain what they had been doing, and they had a very interesting program. I think Don, we forgot to announce that we were gonna be there, so one of us had to leave, but Don agreed that he would leave, so that we wouldn't have enough members there to make it appear that we were having a meeting. But it's really good, the kids did an excellent job, we thoroughly enjoyed it. Secondly, I had an opportunity to go to the YMCA ribbon-cutting for the new Donnie Williams Aquatic Center there, and that's gonna be a big asset for the Wycomico County. And for a number of years now, the YMCA has, we've partnered with the Board of Ed to have water safety programs for all of fourth graders, and I think they're also doing something with sixth grade as well, but this new addition will certainly enhance the program that they're gonna be having there. And as I mentioned before, I stopped by a couple of times, three times, at the Lake Street Playground, where Mr. Goss's program was for the lunch and dinner and breakfast programs, which is really fantastic. Those kids, and you've heard me say it before, for some of these kids, they got three nutritious meals, and that was a big plus factor for them. Also, a number of times while I'm on the highway, I see, I think about... Also, a number of times while I'm on the highway, I see, I think about Mr. Hughes because I see the buses running.
Oh, why not?
Where they're getting kids from one place to another and that's also a good thing for the community because then they know that the schools are being used and the buses are being used, it's just not sitting there for a three-month period. So, that worked out real well and I thoroughly enjoyed that and I guess in a few weeks from now, we're going to see many more buses on the highway and looking forward to the coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Lewis?
I thought you were going to make me go last this time again.
No.
Right, so, good afternoon. I agree with the other board members, it has been a very, very busy July. As many of you know, I am real big into the art program here and I, as Mr. Brown would say, would be to my own drum, so I frequent a facility and had a tad bit of ink artwork done and the discussion came up that, oh, we know who you are and they were talking about the high-quality education that they received and how the art teachers really pushed them to do abstract work and that was one of the exact reasons that they had gone into the ink industry. So, I wanted to share that because I knew Dr. Hanlon loves the fine arts as well as many of us, but I was extremely excited to hear them going on about the high-quality education that they had received in Wycomico County and with the art program. I actually attended the National Night Out at Pittsville and we helped with a hoop shoot, so it was very nice to see. I know a lot of the other board members went to their different hometowns and did the National Night Out there as well. East Side Chamber of Commerce, we did meet again and talked about working with the Board of Ed with having volunteers from the local schools come out and do some things for them. We have some elderly members in that committee and they love having the volunteers and that the students are very respectful, that they come out, they are equipped to do the job and they seem to be very personable, so we do enjoy having them come out and help with that. I actually had the opportunity to review the link for the Frog Street Program. It is absolutely wonderful. The founder of that program put a wonderful tutorial on, I just love the plush animals and the manipulatives and how it's going to flow along with our new pre-K 3 and all-day pre-K 4 programs. I think that's wonderful as well. I also had the opportunity to visit the YMCA and enjoy the ribbon cutting and to see all the children, enjoy the new warm saltwater pool. As soon as they cut the ribbon, the children, like the floodgates opened. They, it was wonderful, they were staffed very, very well. The lifeguards, the counselors that they had, extremely interactive, some of them I believe actually were Wycomico County graduates and high school students who were the lifeguards and the counselors there, so it was wonderful to see those as individuals as well. We did attend the campus fire and I do thank Mr. Fitzgerald for leaving so that I would have the opportunity to stay simply because I RSVP'd to the wrong individual. So, I am very thankful for him for allowing me to stay so that I could experience that for the very first time. I would like to somehow get involved with that, again, going more than just to see the end of the year program. And...
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday, we, Ms. Ann and myself, attended a one-day new board orientation in Annapolis at MAB. It was, it was a wonderful experience. I think that that is a great organization for us to take advantage of the multiple free programs that they offer as well as registering for some of their other events and activities and programs. I had the opportunity to visit Pittsville. Mr. Souza, thank you so much for jumping in and assisting with that. My husband and I are actually, we're very thankful that we were able to contribute to the floor design, so that was a wonderful opportunity to go in and to get to see that and it looks wonderful, the children are going to be super excited when they return, so thank you for all the work that's being done in all the schools this summer. And, Mr. Hughes, we are so hoping that seeing all those buses that are out and about are going to remind parents that they need to register their children for pre-K. So, it has reminded a few individuals, I know Willards has had some kids come in and register and it was stated that they saw buses, so that is, that's fantastic, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Well, Tanya and Ann, you've really been busy.
Yeah, I'm sorry we're out of time now, we're going to have to...
On your man's show.
Recently, Dr. Hanlon, I think I mentioned that when I walk into a room, I just automatically look at everything and remembering that, I also want to remember that I like the fine arts and as I walked into this room, if everybody would look on the walls around you, you will notice a lot of fine arts that was brought over by Nikki and Andrea earlier in this week and now some of it's displayed right here in our own boardroom. And if you want to see some really good art, I mean professional art, you need to come in and look at some of these. This one you can't see, over here underneath the, the board over here is exceptional. The one behind Nikki with the color and those plants is exceptional. The simplicity of that one photograph of, or painting of a bird up there is, is just fantastic. So, the arts are alive and well, I support it 100% and even the one photograph of a young lady there is on our new fact sheet that's coming out, so, so the fine arts is doing well in Wycomico County and I support it. I would also like to say the amount of work that was done over the summer by facilities and physical plant, you do not do this kind of work on a whim. This kind of work has to be planned out, sometimes years in advance. When you go to do roofs on buildings, it's very particular work, very expensive, it has to be done right, it has to be planned just right when the kids are off school. When you tackle these floors in schools, you can't do that with a little machine that you have to just move back and forth, that's out. Having the right equipment for our staff is very important and because they have the right equipment, they can do this kind of work on the floors and on the gym floors. You have to have specialized equipment and you have to know what you're doing and by just viewing that part of the list that we've seen today shows you our physical plant and facilities members knows what they're doing, so I'd like to personally thank all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Murray?
Well, it's interesting and I hope we do continue the pattern of rotating sides because everything, kind of got covered on the other side today and so I'll make mine brief. At the, I was at the Y, the opening there at the pool, which was fantastic and watching all the students be able to take part of that and jump in, of course, afterwards and also the other night I was down there briefly at the Evening in the Park, which I think is a great program for our community, our parents and our students and all of us to come together and other things have been mentioned, so I won't go there, but I want to thank at this point all of the departments. I think the food services and doing everything they did in providing those meals was fantastic this summer and also with our transportation and every department that is preparing, because this is an important month when everything starts for our whole new school year and I thank everybody, a lot of hard work's been put into it. I know there's been a lot of sacrifices too on times that people probably would like to do things with their own families, but they've had to make sure that our schools are ready to open, so I'll close in thanking you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, first of all, Gene, I want to thank you for stepping in and pinch hitting for me today. I just hope the voice hangs in there. Just give me an update, I was hoping to be having surgery here shortly, but they put it off to October 1st, so I won't be, finally got a surgery date. Ron Clark, how awesome it's going to be to have that gentleman here in this community. I've known for a few months of this happening, but I've been, I did not share. Well, when the news got out last week, I was at Old Mill and one of our teachers is a waitress there and her husband is an AD for us in this county. She came up to me, gave me a hug, said, "Mr. Fitzgerald, you might not be able to tell me, but who's going to be our guest speaker this year?" And I got grinning and she said, "What's the matter?" I said, "Well, it was announced today." "Well, who is it?" I said, "Ron Clark." Well, we had a scene in Old Mill, she was ecstatic along with a lot of other teachers that I'm hearing are ecstatic. Well, I thought that Don Fitzgerald wasn't going to be able to make it, but I guess the good Lord decided that I needed to be with you all and he's put off, put off the surgery, so I will be there, but this is awesome that we have teachers jumping up and down wanting to hear Ron Clark. On a positive note, Gene, Michael and I had a meeting with the auditors today on our school system and I will say, again, it's awesome to work with the professionals we have in our finance department and our bookkeepers. Out of all the food service check, we had one school with less than a $5 mistake out of all of our students, audits, so that's awesome and we only had four schools that had any comment. Again, they turned that in and we are getting an award for the, I think the eighth year in a row for excellence, so to the staff, what an awesome job. You know, I, just prior to myself coming on the board, there was some more problem in this county and what Bruce implemented is paying dividends for somebody who coaches and has to turn any money to a bookkeeper. I know how it is, they're very strict on what you do and that's the way it should be. So, again, it was great to get these results and I know I'm not, I'm talking a little longer than Tanya today, but I'm going to take the opportunity...
I'll let it slide.
Again, Gene, it's going to be a little longer, but I really appreciate you sitting in and filling in for us, so thank you.
You're welcome. So, I attended a lot of the events that my colleagues talked about, so I'll talk about two that I attended that I didn't hear mentioned. One of them was the Miller Toss Clam Bake in Chrisfield, Dr. Hanlon was also there. It was 150 degrees in the shade, but it's always the hottest day of the year if you've ever been, but there's a lot of fun and fellowship. We saw the governor, saw the mayor was there, so it's always a great place to network and talk to folks. Dr. Hanlon and I attended the Horizons Breakfast for the Summer Enrichment Program, which you always hear testimonials from parents and students. It's a great program, it just follows in line with the school year, these folks stay, you know, interested in studies and keep them going through the summer. Couple of times this summer I rode around and just watched the various areas where there were meals being served, it's amazing, everyone's touched on that, but that's just an amazing service that we provide for folks that normally they may not have those nutritious meals, so I would like to just thank everyone in this room for what you did in the summer. Mr. Palmer touched on it very well with services and facilities and also a shout-out to our teachers who I know are already preparing for the school year. Couple of weeks they'll be reporting in and I see a couple that, two are in my family, so I know that they're already thinking about school and getting ready, so thank you for what you're about to do and we look forward to a fantastic start of a new school year and with that, we're adjourned.